In a healthy and economically vibrant region, offering people choices and how they, where they live, work, play, and travel. We're the Metropolitan Planning Organization. So as such, we receive federal dollars for a variety of transportation projects from widening the roadway to public transportation to bicycle and pedestrian plans. But really, as we're doing this, we're really looking to not just, you know, move traffic faster, but to really build communities and really be a stakeholder along with this Garden City, Ada County, the Highway District, and many others, to make sure we're working in the right direction. And that's why we see ourselves as a regional forum for collaboration. And so I should also mention that anywhere that somebody lives in the Treasure Valley, they're represented by at least two people on our Board of Directors, Mayor Evans, and Highway District Commissioners, County Commissioners, and others. So we, as the Board of Directors for Compass is increasingly concerned about the rate and pace and, and location of growth. And what is that doing to our financial budgets? Can we afford the services that we're obligating ourselves to with, with growth? Really looked at this and asked Compass to, to identify and do a fiscal impact analysis. So we, I keep leaning away from this microphone, but so we contracted with a firm out of DC called Tischler Bice. They're really the national standard for doing fiscal impact analysis in the nation. They found that they were getting so much work in the Intermountain West with all the work going on. They actually moved a part of their headquarters to Boise. So now we have a, a local branch of Tischler Bice because they were, so much of Intermountain West is growing quickly. But a fiscal impact analysis really at its core is an evaluation of the expenditures that you're expected to receive with new growth through property taxes, fees, and other revenues. And a comparison to that to the expenditures that you'll see, the obligations that we see for new roadways, new schools and fire and, and other services that we have. And, and really the, the comparison between the two. And if there's revenues that exceed expenditures, we have a net positive fiscal impact and that's generally good. And, and if expenditures exceed that, then it's a net negative fiscal impact. And, and that's really something to, to consider and be aware of. But we did a very deep dive. We worked with Jenna. We worked with Public Works and Fire Departments and, and a variety of different service providers so that we've really could do an A to Z comprehensive view of what are the services that different public agencies provide and how are those affected by the type and location of different, of, of growth. So we looked at transportation, schools, police and fire, libraries, parks and recreation, administration. In fact, we have over a hundred different, different line items in this fiscal impact tool. So we could be very comprehensive about what does growth mean to us and what are the benefits and what are the, the costs associated with that? Let me take just a step back and say what the fiscal impact tool is not. It's not an economic impact tool. So we're not looking to use this to say, what if a new major industry came into the valley? What would be the spillover effect? What, you know, what restaurants and dry cleaners and, you know, all those services? We're, we're not really looking at the private sector side. This analysis we did is solely looking at the public sector side of this. So we're, we're not using this analysis to say, well, if this new development comes in, we're going to have spillover jobs. We're just looking at what does this mean to your budgets? It's also not meant to be more than a tool. It's a one tool in a, in a variety of the toolbox that we need to look at whether things are good for our communities. Your city comprehensive plan has a number of different goals in it. I'm sure one of those is financial sustainability, but hopefully, but it's just one. And so we find that sometimes, you know, some things may meet other goals, but they don't pencil financially. So affordable housing or, well, one example that our consultant used when they did fiscal impact analysis for Boulder, Colorado was restaurants. And they found out that restaurants were typically a net negative. And yet the whole vibe that they wanted to do, the vibrancy of the community and travel and tourism really is based a lot around those restaurants. And so they, they said, this is not going to be the only thing. And that kind of leads to my next point. This is, really shouldn't be the end all be all. There's a lot of different things to consider. Many metropolitan planning organizations like Compass, when they build these, the decision makers just want to know, what is the fiscal impact tool say? And, and I think there's a lot of different things to consider. And, and so while something may not pencil financially, it, it may still be good for your community. Having said that, this is still now a very important tool and we think that it'll be quite useful for decision making. So let me give a little walkthrough of how the tool works and, and some of the internal workings of it. This map that you see here is, is how we split up the two county area into about 130 different geographic areas. And we did this because we wanted to be very specific and granular about how growth in different parts of the community can impact the city in different ways. And also different service providers, you know, in, in, well, in Ada County, you have one highway district, but in Canyon County, there's several highway districts. And depending on where that growth is and who's the service provider, it could impact budgets in different ways. More so, moreover, we wanted to make sure that in growth in, in different places, obviously we'll have different property values, but also different dependencies on services. Growth in one school district where they are already over capacity will have more capital and operating costs than a school district that is under capacity. So we really wanted to make sure that was very geographically fine pointed so that we could be very specific and accurate with this. We also plugged in several different land use profiles into this, a number of different residential and over a dozen different employment types. So again, we could say, you know, what type of development we're looking at and how does that impact revenues and expenditures in different ways? We believe that this represents probably 95% of all development that we see in, in the Treasure Valley. There may be one offs and kind of unique special things, a baseball stadium or theme park may not fit into our nice model. That'd be something we would have to do kind of a special run, model run for that. But, but most things that we see fit into this tool quite nicely. And then we wanted to make sure that the tool really was representative of the local demographic conditions. So this is a screenshot of, of single family detached housing and at different breakpoints, value points, it would have different impact on the, on the public services, different persons per household, different students per household, different vehicle miles traveled and different enforcement, law enforcement and police calls. As price point goes up, we actually find that we're getting less students. And so obviously that would have a different impact on the school district than a home with a lower price point that has more students. We'll be using this tool for reporting this information and really providing new information so you can make the decisions you need to. I apologize for the, maybe the clarity of this slide if it's not in front of you, but this shows the, the different ways that we can look at how a development proposal will impact city, county, school, highway, and valley regional transit budgets. So this is a hypothetical example of a grocery store and 50 apartment units. And you can see what is the revenue and the cost associated with that? And at what point do you break even? Are there, you know, a number of years where you're in the red, but, but eventually those property taxes pick up and make up for that? We'll also be using this for, we have a development review checklist that we provide with any large scale developments, roughly 50 units or more, and that will be included in these development checklist to provide just another data point for you to evaluate and for you to consider what's the ramifications to, to, to your, your community of approving or not approving different developments? So I think I've given you a lot to chew on. This, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. This picture is in there not only for that, but also to say that a tool like this requires a lot of care and feeding. And we're going to be working with your staff over the next few years as we want to make sure it's up to date and accurate and current and making sure that we reflect your budgets, your capital improvement plans, your planning areas. And so we'll, we'll be using this tool and then continue to work with your staff on developing it. But we think that this is going to be a really useful tool to really help understand the financial ramifications of development or comp planning or land use planning in a way that we've never had before. So thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, I've got a couple, Carl. One is one of the matrix of estimated water consumption or sewer discharge. Do we, does it get to that?
Good question, Mayor Evans, City Council. We did not include public utilities in this because as, as demand increases or as those are, public utilities are extended, that usually is built into the cost to other consumers and is not into the city's budget itself. And so we didn't include public utilities.
Okay, okay. That's something we, we can do analysis on because the, the aquifers, the aquifer is a finite resource. So that's a component that, that we need to take a look at. Also, as far as the city's ability to access the tool, if we have, is this something, a model that you would run? Or is it a model that can be accessed by our staff, for example, and plug in the grocery store in your example? And, and it's, it's something out?
Yeah, Mayor Evans, Garden City Council, great question. Currently, the tool is, is an Excel spreadsheet based tool that Compass houses and will be the official entity to run any analysis. We are working with Tischler Bice on updating our license agreement so that potentially in the future, we can provide a, a web based tool to your staff. So pre-application meetings, as staff is meeting with the developer, you can run those numbers right away and get some answers and not have to wait for the, you know, the planning and zoning meeting or city council meeting to, to have that discussion. So hopefully those discussions can happen really early on in the process and use that as part of the negotiation. But we still have to work with some attorneys there. And so I can't make too many promises at this point, but we're working with Tischler Bice on that.
Would there be anything that would prevent a staff member from coming out to Compass and having it run?
Oh, Mayor Evans, City Council, no, of course not. We're always available for Jenna or your staff to contact us and we can work through the numbers together. Eventually, we'd like to make it so that they don't even have to contact us. But for now, I'm, I'm available all the time for that.
Thanks. Who else has questions?
Your second question was my question. So we got that answer.
Yeah. Well, it's pretty interesting. So you're, you're up now. So I think you can probably anticipate a visit from somebody from here just to, just to run through that. How many categories did you say? 130?
There's roughly, Mayor Evans, City Council, there's roughly 130 geographic areas. And then there's about 100 different line items in the tool. So it's a pretty intensive tool, all built in Excel, but it should, we built it that way. So it'd be very accurate and, and current.
Is there a way to get just a copy of the line items?
Well, it would reflect your budget. It's, it's your budget is, is built into the tool as one of the, the key features. And then the tool will read based on different development proposals. It will read your budget and it can look at, you know, an additional home will impact, you know, be half a student. And so that will go towards the cost of a student in the, I believe, is it Boise School District? I apologize.
Boise School District, Ameridian.
Yeah, okay. Well, okay. So, so again, and that's another reason we broke up geographically to make sure that Boise students cost the Boise School District, the West Ada students cost them. So there's, we, we can't provide the tool as it is. There's trade secrets that Tischler Bice doesn't allow us to share. But we do have a, a report from them as well as a frequently asked questions on our website for, for the public to review if they want.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Miller, how, and maybe you don't know the answer to this off the top of, top of your head, but how many geographic areas are essentially constitute Garden City? Is it, is it one or?
That's an excellent question, Councilman Page, members of the City Council. I believe that there are three areas representing your entire area of impact. Your city's not too much different than your area of impact compared to a lot of other cities. I believe we broke Garden City into three different areas.
I have one more question too. So Mr. Miller, is there other jurisdictions around the country that have been using this model for some period of time? And at, at what level does it come into the decision, decision making? Is it, for instance, the planning and zoning level or is it at the council level or at the staff level?
Yeah, good question, Councilman, Mayor. So there's, there's, I guess to answer that, there's no other model exactly like this one. Tischler Bice built this specifically, customized it specifically with the, the budgets and the local geography. So while they have built these for other communities, this one that they built specifically for us, others that they have built for other locations are used quite a bit. Now, different states have different local land use planning acts and that allow them to look at, evaluate this in, in different ways. So I'm not going to play attorney and tell you what you can use this for here in, in Idaho and what you can't. But I know that it's been especially helpful at that comprehensive plan level as cities, you know, put colors on a map and different densities. Oftentimes they get to the end of that process with a lot of stakeholder engagement and then can't answer the question, is this a good thing for our city, at least financially? And so I, I know that this would be really helpful at that stage in, in the process as well as we'll be contributing these for development proposals. So we can know, you know, what does this mean to you as, as different development types get, get approved in Garden City?
I think where I see it is it would be part of our ability to serve analysis that we want to currently do, but we don't do it to this degree.
Right.
Okay, anything else for Carl? Okay. Well, thank you very much, Carl. Very informative and we'll look forward to running the test.
Great. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Charlie's got a update for us on our 5G design issue we've been dealing with. I handed out a supplemental by seventeen sheet, just inserted a picture up in the, in the top that, that you'll notice what's on the screen. It replaces what's on the screen there. So just kind of a picture worth a thousand words, so to speak. So anyway, Charlie, go ahead when you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My memorandum is in your packet. It starts on page three of your packet. It is fairly lengthy. I apologize for that, but as, the more we get involved in this, the more complicated it becomes. So in the next nine minutes, I'll summarize my memo and where we're at. I would like to talk about page two of my memo just briefly, which is page four of your packet. The council did receive some recommendations from design review and the Parks Committee on what they, they liked or were recommending in terms of design standards. And one of which is this picture on the bottom of page two of my memo, which is page four of your packet. And they recommended this Erickson pole. And what the industry pointed out is this Erickson pole is not a 5G pole. So if you go to the next page of my memo, 5G have to have this tower or this antenna on top. And so this Erickson pole is not going to work because there's no antenna on top. So for every 5G, there, there has to be certain things. And one is a cantina, I think. And then this thing that sits on the top, which I have on page three of my memorandum. So that recommendation is not going to work, but we do have specific recommendations and I'll summarize those briefly. One of the issues that the city has to decide is what to do, if anything, on ACHD right away. Specifically, what should we do regarding the traffic signals? And so if you look at your screen and on the share screen, what we're recommending right now, and it's all subject to change because this is a moving target a little bit, but in Garden City for 5G, you would have a type one pole, a type two pole, a type three pole, and a type four pole. These type four poles, these are the 5G antennas that would go on top of your traffic signals. Now, these traffic signals are owned or maintained by ACHD. There's, if, if they're owned by ITD, I understand that there's a maintenance agreement and ACHD takes care of these traffic signals. And so what staff is recommending specifically development services is that because that, these are going to be an ACHD right away, that the city don't regulate them at all. We just rely on ACHD or I, I think primarily it's going to be ACHD, perhaps ITD gets involved, but predominantly it's ACHD. So staff is recommending that the city not even regulate traffic control signals and let ACHD deal with that with their standards and their design standards. So, but that's a, that's a policy decision for the mayor and council, council ultimately to decide is whether we want to regulate traffic control signals with internal equipment on top of or overlaying ACHD or whether we just trust ACHD to regulate that. That's one issue. I talked about that on page four of my memo. And then that, aside from that issue, then we have type one, type two, and type three poles. We haven't really talked too much about type one poles, but these are 5G antennas that go on top of the utility pole. And because the utility pole, I know that there's not, there's a preference that we not use wood, but a lot of our utility poles are wood. And so if they attach their antenna, it's, you're going to see it, you know? And so how do we deal with that? And then, so this is the standalone pole. This is what would be in the neighborhoods right here. This type two typically a standalone and then type three is a light pole, a streetlight and what that looks like. And so that's kind of, we kind of looked at some other jurisdictions. This is similar to other jurisdictions and there has been a recent development on the type three poles that I'll get to in a minute. And I have six minutes here. So if you look at my memos starting on page four, I go through Ada County Highway District does have aesthetic standards. They have different standards for residential neighborhoods, so on and so forth. So one of the things that I think at some point in time, and not tonight, this is just a work session, this is just a discussion, but I want to keep these things fresh in your mind if, if, you know, if we can. One of the things is how tall should these things be? And so ACHD has some distance requirements, like on page six of my memo, they say that for standalone poles, they cannot be within 10 feet of a traffic control signal or streetlight. They cannot be within 25 feet of any other utility pole. And so they have, ACHD does have those things. I will tell the council, I think ACHD is looking at their design standards again. So this is all kind of a moving target. Boise is looking at the design standards again. ACHD is looking at their design standards again, so on and so forth. I think a lot of the jurisdictions are kind of waiting to see what Garden City does. So we're, we're kind of the tip of the spear on some of these issues regarding 5G. And so on page eight of my memo, I talk about, you know, staff's recommendation is we have a preference and that is first install them on the arterial streets, then install them in the collector streets and then install them on the local streets. And I should comment briefly on that. I heard the council, the last time we talked about this, talked about different standards for different parts of town. Some jurisdictions distinguish between commercial areas and residential areas and the poles and commercial can be taller than in residential. That's how some jurisdictions do it. Here in Garden City, staff's recommendation is don't distinguish between commercial and residential, distinguish between arterial streets, local streets, and connector streets. And so that's what the recommendation is after talking to Ms. Thornborough about that at some length. And so that is our recommendation. You'll see all these requirements. Also, there's also a relief valve on all these things, which is if the industry comes back and says we cannot meet those regulations, then it would be your development services director that's looking to see if they get a waiver or an exemption. So the recommendation is for this to be a staff decision, not a council decision. There would be due process. So if the industry wanted to appeal, we, we talked about administratively, who should that, who should they appeal to? So it'd be a staff decision and our recommendation is appeal to council instead of planning and zoning or design review. So, you know, the, the council could be looking at some appeals, but initially it would be a staff decision if the council wants to follow the recommendations. One of the things needs to be discussed at some point in time and not now, I have three minutes, but on page nine, it's like, what do you do on the standalone poles? How close can they be together? And so the initial recommendation was they cannot be within 40 feet of each other. And these are standalone poles, but staff would prefer it to be, can't be within 200 feet of each other. The, the rub on these things though is, is just the way the technology works. The taller the pole, the further apart they can be. The shorter the pole, the closer they have to be. And you may hear from some constituents at some point in time that they do not want their poles in their neighborhood, you know? And that's a, that's a legitimate concern, but if the poles are not in your neighborhood, you're not going to get 5G. So if you want 5G, the poles have to be in the neighborhood. And the question is, what does that look like?
Is, is it 200 feet or 600 feet?
So the way it's written, Council President, is it's 600 feet if, if the poles are owned by the same vendor. So, yeah, exactly. But if they're different vendors, then that's a thing. The industry would like 40 feet, staff would like 200 feet. What this industry has told us, and we've met with them a bunch, and I have two minutes, is they're not interested in poles under 30 feet. They say their technology are, is not going to work if they're under 30 feet, which is interesting because if you look at my exhibits and because Public Works, Public Works Director Schmidt delegated this to some of his people, but they went around town seeing how tall our poles are. And our poles are all over the place. Streets, some street lights are 12 feet high, some street lights are 30 feet high. So you know, how, how do you keep it consistent within that context? And so that's one of the issues that we're grappling with. With, what we're recommending right now is, I get to that, it's on page 10 and 11 of my packet, is that if we're talking about, well, let me back up. If we're talking about the main streets, the arterials, no taller than 40 feet, if we're talking about residential or local streets, 25 feet. And so we have different heights restrictions in there. But that's something ultimately for the council, what does the council want, want these to look like in 10, 15, 20 years when, you know, they, they will be popping up. Initially, they just want to go on our arterials, you know, but eventually they're going to need to go into the residential because if you want 5G, you're going to have to have a pole somewhere close to your house. So that's the technology. Those are some of the issues. I can tell, I have one minute. This is kind of what we're looking at. Staff, development services staff like this, this design right here, I have my mouse on it. I think the industry is good with this design and this would be for like historic areas in town. This staff likes this. There's another one here that you have in front of you that staff prefers over this. I just heard from Verizon late this afternoon, the, the hard copy that's in front of you, Verizon is fine with. So if that's the council's preference, I think the industry would be okay with that. And the other issue And the other issue is we're waiting on Idaho Power. We just found out a week or two ago that Idaho Power will not allow the meters, the power meters in the pole. So we might have to change the design standards. And then it gets technical into whether or not the energy is above or below 1,800 watts. So now Idaho Power is getting with their engineers. And so we're kind of on hold. So if there's a little bit of a delay, it's not your staff, it's we're waiting on Idaho Power. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions?
All right, top of the hour. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Thank you.
I'm trying to get another copy right now, I'm almost there. Or we can share mine.
Okay, we ready, Lisa?
Yes.
Hey, thank you. Welcome, everyone. It's Monday, October 11th, 2021. It's time for the regularly scheduled city council meeting. That's the clerk to certify the meeting notice.
This meeting has been noticed in accordance with Idaho Code 74-204.
Clerk call roll, please.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Present.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Susan.
Here. Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you stand and join me, please. Thank you. Next item is changes to the agenda. Council, I have one item for you to consider, and that would be to move item G2 up to G1 and item G1 down to G2. The reason for the requested change is we've had no opposition or issues with item G2. It's a fairly routine easement vacation request. Item G1 is a hearing in which there is a significant amount of interest and might take a little longer. So in deference to the, those associated with item G2, if you allow, we'll go ahead and move that up. But it would take a motion of the council to change the agenda. Yes.
I move that we swap the sequential order of items G1 and G2 and add them to the consent agenda.
Okay, add them to the regular.
Just the agenda.
Just the.
The swapping of those.
Oh, the swapping. Okay, I got you. Okay, I'm sorry. You said it plainly. Thank you. Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing that on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda is amended. Next item is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda with the amendment or the addition proposed by Councilmember Page. Second.
Got a motion and a second for their discussion. Hearing that on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Actually, we have a build agreement on the consent agenda. Would you call the roll on that?
Yes.
Sorry.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Susan?
Yes.
Now we'll move to special business. First item on the agenda is special recognition of Jeanne Barker for her service to the Garden City Library Board of Trustees. I have something for you, Jeanne. Anyway, very appreciative of your service on our library. So anyway, I want to present you with this. And let's get a picture. Yes, for Sheldon. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for letting me do five speeches.
Well, I think I.
Mr. Mayor, you mentioned, how many years did Jeanne serve on our library board? 10?
Library Board, how many years?
Five.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll move down to F2. And no, no pressure, Carrie, but you're taking Jeanne's place. Counsel, I'd like to pray, place before you the appointment of Carrie Ferguson to our Library Board of Trustees for a five-year term. And Carrie is with us this evening.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve Carrie Ferguson to a five-year term on the Garden City Library Board of Trustees.
And second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Of course not. Thank you. Appreciate that. Carrie, would you come up? And I don't know if everybody knows you. Come on in, sure. While you come in front, I just want to have you just lean over and shake hands.
Hi, welcome.
Turn from city attorney.
Thursday, so much.
Good to see you again. Thanks for your service in advance. Great. Next item is F3. October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We have a memorial basically of this October event out at the Peace Officers Memorial in Meridian. And the cities in Ada and Canyon County and the counties have a joint proclamation that we enter into out there. And I wanted to officially make that proclamation here tonight for the city of Garden City. Whereas personal relationships are destroyed through acts of domestic violence where one member gains control and power over another through physical, emotional, sexual, economic or psychological actions or threats. And whereas it is important to make people aware that an estimated one in four women and one in seven men will experience domestic abuse in their lifetime. And whereas victims of domestic violence and their children need the help of strong community partners who can offer help, support, advice and guidance in times of need. And whereas a range of services and programs exist throughout the Treasure Valley, providing safety, healing and freedom from domestic abuse and sexual assault, including secure shelters, court advocacy, counseling, childcare, as well as case management. And whereas wearing purple during the month of October can be used as a way to tell others why ending domestic violence is important to you. Now, therefore, I, John G. Evans, Mayor of the City of Garden City, Idaho, do hereby proclaim October to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month and encourage all citizens to speak out against domestic violence and support local efforts to protect, to provide help and healing to victims of these crimes. Dated this 11th day of October, 2021. Item F4, ARPA funding presentation. Colin, I'm sorry. ARPA is, yeah, the American Recovery Act. So Colin, go ahead.
Mayor Evans, council members, thank you. As you're all aware, through ARPA, the city is, is going to receive some money that can be used towards infrastructure improvements, upgrades to our current system. So I've been asked to prioritize, put a list together of projects within Garden City and then one separate list of projects within the urban renewal area. And then we have a couple of special projects within our town that we need to partner up with the city of Boise. So I've included those as well. First, I'll tell you that I don't think there will be any problem spending every penny that we can get. We have about 12 and a half million dollars worth of projects on our list. Most of them, it's all stuff that needs to be done, some's a much higher priority than others. And we're trying to get new water, new infrastructure on what we consider the south side of Chindon, but the west numbered streets. So that's kind of one of our priorities right there. I think the list of projects was presented in the packet that was distributed to you. If, if you've not had a chance to look at it, it's a pretty extensive list. And the biggest concerns we have right now is actually getting plans put together. That that seems to be one of the biggest headaches right now is just getting all the engineering groups in town are quite busy. So we would just be put on the list and hopefully within the next year or so, we would have plans in place. I believe that there's a, and Lisa can, Lisa knows the structure of the money better than I do. But I believe we have a four-year period to actually get these projects finished. If Lisa, is that correct?
Correct. Mr. Mayor, council, we have two years to commit the funding to a project and then two more years, four years totals to get the expenditures complete. They have been moving deadlines. They just recently moved the first reporting deadline. It wouldn't surprise me if some of these deadlines get moved, but right now we do have the two-year and the four-year commitments.
Right. So as you're going through the list of projects, if there's something that you feel needs to be moved up to a higher priority than what we have it currently at, please feel free to reach out to us. We'd be more than happy to sit down and discuss why we have the priority list set up the way we do. There, there is a little rhyme and reason to it. We just didn't pick a project and throw it number one. So some things have to happen before other parts of the project can happen. And with that, I stand for any questions that you may have.
Okay, so for information, it's 2.2 million total.
Just a little over 2.5 million.
2.5 million. And we've received half of it now, and we received the other half in a year or so.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I think maybe for the benefit of the audience, it would be helpful to know the constraints that are placed on that money.
That's, that's a good topic. The, the constraints on the money, the money isn't to be used to supplant your existing budgetary obligations with some exceptions, and infrastructure is one of those. So sewer and water lines are specifically named. There are other uses of the money, if you can tie it to, with a direct nexus to the impacts of COVID. And how those impacts get interpreted is something we watch on an ever-changing fact sheet that is produced by the Department of the Treasury. So one reason that we are interested in what we know we can use the money for at this stage of the game is that infrastructure improvements have a direct benefit to every person that has a utility connection to the Garden City system. And it's a cost avoidance benefit. So the upgrades that we're going to be providing with the ARPA money result in that level of cost avoidance for future infrastructure upgrades or replacement. So. So that's our reasoning. This is fluid. The council can change its mind. We aren't asking them to officially adopt it now. We do have a list. We wanted an opportunity for them to look at it this evening. And as we, I've instructed staff to go ahead and start getting the engineering lined up on the, on the priorities. But I anticipate with, with, if there aren't any questions, with formalizing this at our next meeting. Any other questions?
Sir Mayor.
Sure.
I think, what is the deadline for the encumbering, our actual deadline on that? To encumber, sorry, to commit funds, what is our deadline?
Mayor, Councilmember Page, I believe it's two years to commit the funds to projects.
But two years starting, has that started?
I believe.
Yes, we received the funds, I believe, in July or August. So the, the two-year clock has started ticking.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next item is F5. Counsel, are there any questions on the monthly staff reports?
Mr. R.
Yes.
I do have a couple of questions. First, I have a question regarding the library services report.
Okay, I don't know if I can answer them or not, and I don't have a library representative here.
So moving on to the Public Works report. I was wondering, Mr. Schmidt, if you could provide an update on the DEQ meeting that happened at the beginning of September, I believe.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Jorgensen, I can provide that. And I think if you, if you'll go along with me, I think at the end of the meeting, we have a discussion point about DQ and the signature of the forms associated with the water planning grant. So if that is okay with you, maybe we can answer all these questions at that time.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? And if you would, you can forward your question to Lindsay. And we'll make sure we get it answered. We'll move now down to ordinances, resolutions and contracts. Thank you, Jeanne, again. All right. Okay. And we'll start. The first item under G will be a public hearing on resolution 1109-21. This is approving an easement vacation request.
Move the consent. Move the motion to the.
Okay. Colin, do you want to just reassure the council that this is something you've taken a look at before I open the public hearing?
Mayor, council members, regarding the easement that's on the agenda tonight, we have reviewed that and Garden City's, all the corpses, fine with releasing that.
Okay. Any questions for staff on that? Okay. With that, I'll open the public hearing on resolution 1109-21. And did anyone sign up for this item? No one present signed up for this item. Is anyone that's joined us virtually want to testify regarding this item? If so, use the raise your hand option in Zoom. Okay, let the record reflect that no one's. Who did?
Peggy.
Oh, Peggy. Yes. Yes, okay, go ahead. You're mute. There we go.
Yes, I just, I had a couple of questions. I own property on 43rd Street, 311. And I also own the property that abuts the new development on Adams north, on, on the north side. And I had. And I had concerns because we had not gotten any information on this property development as to what they're going to do along our property line. And from the looks of this, it looks like they're going to run the power lines right across that part of it, as well as a driveway right next to the property. So I haven't been able to contact anybody to get any other information on this.
Okay. Mr. Schmidt, we've got we've got the plans that map this, of course.
Right.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, so an adjoining property owner that wants to know how vacating this easement impacts their property, how would they go about paying that information?
I think they can actually get into the council packet. They can actually see the plans that were presented to us. And that, if I recall, that that does show the vacation of the of the easement that of the current easement that's there. A lot of these easements were in place prior to the new development. So they they worked well with what was there prior, but the new building that's coming on, it does not work. So sometimes they'll they'll ask for relinquishment of that easement so that they can build there and then move the easement to where it's more desirable on the project. And that was the case with the water and sewer. I cannot speak about the about the power.
Okay, does it impact an adjoining property owner?
The water and sewer easements do not. No, everything will be just as it remains today at the adjacent properties outside of this property. For that's being redeveloped.
Okay, were you able to hear that at all?
Yes.
Yes.
The only question I have is I can view the packet, but I have no idea where to even start looking in there. I mean, there's so much of it to look at. You know, if they could direct me a little bit closer idea of what area to look in.
It's on page 385.
Mr. Mayor, and just as a point of clarification, there is an existing development that's already been approved in association with this application. And I'd be more than happy to send Ms. Clements the the link to the the design, already approved design application. And and she is correct, there is a proposal for a relocation of the Idaho power lines in association with this request to build out. What's happened is those lots have have gone through a lot line consolidation, and they're turning into one lot for a mixed-use development. And it is my understanding and also a code requirement that any Idaho power lines would be undergrounded. Okay.
Great, thank you.
All right, that answers my question, thank you.
Peggy, could I get your name and address?
Yes, Peggy Clements, 311 East 43rd Street.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to testify? Okay, hearing none. We'll close the public hearing on resolution 1109-21 and turn it to the council for disposition.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we approve resolution 1109-21 regarding the easement vacation request for file EAS-FY 2021-16.
I would second.
Got a motion and a second, need further discussion? Hearing on the clerk call roll.
Councilmember Paige.
Yes.
Councilmember Suzie.
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. Now we'll move to our amended item G two. This is DSR-FY 201-25. This is an appeal for an approval of a design review application for a property located at 501 East 41st Street in Garden City. The nature of this item requires me to go through a few things. So I'll ask you for your patience as I go through the required protocol on an appeal. Before we enter into this item, I need to ask the city council members if any of them need to declare conflict on this issue. No.
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 Okay, let the record reflect, no conflicts have been declared. Next, at the beginning of the hearing, I need to identify for the record what's being appealed and the specific items I have are two items. One is failure to meet design standards. The second is failure to meet parking standards. Next item, I have the appellant, Wendy Carver-Herbert, I see you here, and the properties is represented by Mr. Talbot, okay. I need to ask each of you at this point if you have any issues with the content of the record. That would be the record of the design review hearing. Okay, Vida says no. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, for the record, both both the appellant and the respondent indicated no.
That's.
Okay, just for the record, thank you.
Okay, okay. The evidence and information considered, unless the city council directs otherwise, the appeal will be on the record of the design review committee, including any audio recording or transcript, if one exists of the hearing in front of the design review committee. And such new evidences may be presented. Again, this is at the direction of the city council. The party should be prepared to present the city council with citations to the record and or transcript, if one exists, by page number, which supports the party's respective arguments. Asking questions of the parties, the city council should be prepared to reference citations to the record and or transcript, if one exists, by page number. The standard of review, the city council's role is to review the decision of the design review committee. When reviewing a decision of the design review committee, the city council shall review the record of the committee with due regard for the committee's decision. The standard of review of an appeal from a design review, a decision to the city council shall shall not be de novo, but the record may be supplemented by such new evidences may be presented. The standard of review shall be governed by the following. There's one item, deference, due deference shall be given to the actions of the design review committee. Burden of proof in all appeals pursuant to Title VIII of the Garden City Code shall be on the appellant. The order of the hearing, we will hear from the appellant at first, who will state their argument. Second, the respondent will present their argument. Third, the appellant shall present any rebuttal argument. The city council's action deliberations and the oral opinion of each item appealed must be concluded prior to adjourning of the hearing. Decision for each item being appealed must be determined through a separate motion and voted on through a rule called vote. So each member of the city council may make his or her vote individually. After hearing on the appeal, the city council shall make its written decision and adopt findings of fact and conclusions by its next regularly scheduled meeting. City council decisions may include affirm, may include in part or the entirety of an action to affirm, vacate, remand, or reverse. Affirm means to agree with and confirm the design review committee's decision. Vacate would mean to cancel or render the design review committee's decision null and void. Remand would mean to send back to the design review committee for further action. Reverse would be to change the design review committee's decision so that the decision of the design review committee is overturned. Then, council, there are various grounds for affirming a decision by the design review committee. They include if it's for affirming, it would be if the if the design review committee inferences, conclusions, or decisions are not in violation of constitutional or statutory provisions. If the committee's findings, inferences, conclusions, or decisions are not in excess of the statutory authority that they have, are not made upon unlawful procedure, are not supported by substantial evidence on the record as a whole, and are not arbitrary, capricious, or an abusive discretion. Grounds for vacating, remanding, or reversing this decision would be if the true intent of Title VIII of Garden City Code or the codes adopted thereunder have been incorrectly interpreted. If they do not apply, or an equally good or better form of construction should have been applied or are not supported by the weight of the evidence, or a significant error in the application has been identified, or a significant violation of notice provisions have been enumerated. Or there is a significant error identified, or a significant error in the application of approved city policies that is identified. Okay, thank you for your indulgence. So we went through that. We will now proceed. Hey, Ms. Carver-Herbert, welcome. Now we'll have you stand over here. And proceed at your pleasure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'm Wendy Carver-Herbert. I live at 8515 West Outwater Drive. Mr. Mayor, since I've provided written testimony ahead of time, I don't feel compelled to the need to actually read it word for word into the record unless it would be the request of the council to do that.
Is there any request by the council to read her written testimony that was in the packet into the record? It's in the record because you submitted it in.
Ahead of time, as requested, yes.
And thank you for doing that.
Yes, but I do have, actually, I think probably just what I would consider more of a summation, I think.
Yes.
Okay. So I think, as you all know, I'm not a lawyer, and I don't have pages and pages of case law to refer to in defending my reasons for this appeal. But there are a few things that I've learned over the years in my quest to be to be a better community advocate, particularly as I attended Smart Growth Idaho Citizens Planning Academy, and particularly the sessions by University of Idaho Law Professor Stephen Miller, who specializes in land use law. What I learned was a city has broad latitude in its land use decisions as long as as its findings of fact are strongly written and supported. And it only takes one reason for denying an application or overturning a decision of a planning official. So if I were to hang my hat on anything, frankly, and not too exciting, but it would be the parking standard. Because residential parking requirements are clearly defined in Garden City Code 8-4D-5. This application does not meet the requirement, period. One reason, that's all it takes. But I think it's important to provide some context for any sort of a decision that you might make. And while relying on the comprehensive plan and the land use map cannot solely be the grounds for denial of an application, the design standard referenced in my written testimony does provide that context. It's really important to point out that the comprehensive plan is actually codified by reference in Garden City Code 8-4B-1C as it relates to development being compatible with the intended character of the neighborhood. That character should not be determined by just one property owner who is proposing a massive development that is three times taller than its own approved adjacent buildings and far exceeds the height of anything for miles. Characters should rightfully be determined by the neighbors and citizens who have lived, who live in the city and provided their input through a process, through a public process as they did during the 2019 comprehensive plan update. The city's egregious failure to ensure height standards are in conformance with its comprehensive plan and are clearly defined in, are clearly defined in its zoning code unfortunately only victimizes the citizens who live here. So in summary, make it simple, it's the design standards that provide the context and the motivation for overturning approval of this application. But it's the failure to meet the city's residential parking standards that is the solid findings of fact that I'm confident will hold as a legal reasoning for that decision. And I ask for you to support this appeal by reverting the decision of the design review committee. And I thank you, and I stand for any questions.
Thank you, questions?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask questions as a point of order?
Sure.
Ms. Carver-Herbert, which one of the standards do you think they got wrong specifically?
On the parking?
Well, on either, on any of your arguments, there's.
Okay, I pointed that out in my original testimony.
So we're all clear.
Sure, thank you. Okay, so under the parking standards, that it is parking standard 8-5D or 4D-5. There is a minimum parking standard for residential developments. And in the staff report, as pointed out in the staff report on page 19, it goes through identifying the number of spaces required by code and then also how the applicant is providing those spaces. So it's, the code requires 245 off-street residential parking spaces. However, the applicant is only providing 212, according to the staff report. This project is deficient by 33 residential parking spaces. And because this has changed from a commercial, predominantly a commercial use, or basically only a commercial use, to a predominantly residential use with only a very small portion of it as being commercial. City parking requirements for residential developments should apply. So again, I refer back to my original testimony. And then again, regarding the design standards, I basically say that Garden City Development Code 8-4B-1C is the standard of which it talks that the purpose is to ensure that the design of structures and site development is compatible with the intended character of the neighborhood as set forth in the comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay, anything further?
I'll do it.
Okay, we'll hear from the respondent, and then you'll have an opportunity to have the last word.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council members.
Thank you. If you would, give us your name and address when you're ready to proceed for the record and.
Mike Talbot, 1743 Bannock in Boise.
Okay.
And I want to thank Ms. Herbert for her focus and her passion that we need a lot more neighbors and people. And I want to thank Ms. Herbert for her focus and her passion that we need a lot more neighbors and people in the community to pay attention. So whether the side of the fence we're on, I really appreciate that there are people paying attention. That's kind of something we need to get a trend going, maybe. We're here today to discuss an appeal that she has filed that somewhere that the D R committee had aired in the opinion to approve our project back on August sixteenth. A little background real quick of why we even came to you folks to the city to make the change. We, with the conditions of our country with the pandemic and the economics, we felt the hotel was not as good a play, not as good an idea. We need better housing instead of hotel rooms. We did a traffic study and investigated that we found forty-five percent less traffic came to the area with the residential component versus the hotel. It is a huge reduction in the vehicles in the area. It provided a better access for residential use for the community to the green belt. And so we made a decision to make the request, and I thought it maybe I'd just go through where we are today. We came to the D R committee for a modification to our existing C U P approval. It was a mixed-use project that included the boardwalk apartments as well as the four oh six apartments and the hotel at the time. We're requesting to modify the C U P portion of that application over on the single lot there on the side of a greenbelt. We didn't request, nor are we still requesting any variances. We're not looking for any conditional use permits. We're actually going to update the one we originally got approved. We the local neighborhood originally requested, when we were in the D R committee review, they were requesting less cars. They were concerned about bringing so many cars in. And in the end, we came up with a parking plan through the D R and staff, which helped us greatly to mitigate the concerns both the community as well as mitigate the needs for parking on this project. What I'm going to do is ask that Andy Erstad step up for a moment to just talk about the merits of the architecture of this project. Because it's a significant project. And then Joanne Butler will address the question of the compliance to the comprehensive plan, which we think is fully complied with. And then Chad Wilson with Erstad will also come up and talk about the parking matter and give you some mechanics of that. I do want to note that Hannah is right up in the staff report, kind of didn't necessarily reflect all the facts back in the apartment application. So in the beginning, she, she made a conclusion, and in the end, she wrapped it all up in a bow and basically said, but in the end, we were conditioned, we have a fourteen cross-park agreement requirement, which is conditioned on the property, and we're willing to comply with that as well as if we needed to add more parking, we have that opportunity. So the parking, really the deficit of the parking that's in the staff report, ultimately we get mitigated with this cross-park agreement. So if I could ask Andy to step up first, and then we'll go through.
Mayor, council members, my name's Andy Erstad, Erstad Architects, three one zero North Fifth Street, Boise. You know, at the end of the day, we feel that the Designer Review Committee did make the right decision with the findings of facts and conclusions of law. We're really excited about this project, and as Mike indicated, the, the change from from hotel to residential is actually a decrease in, in load on the street system and things of that nature. Also wanted to just touch a little bit on some just the concept of the project and how it's enhancing the green belt. It's enhancing and creating a vibrancy, and it's going to bring an energy to that general area, which is across both east and west of Veterans Memorial Parkway. We're seeing a tremendous amount of, of positive growth in fill energy and vibrancy. I, as, as Mike said, Joanne's going to talk a little bit about the, the ordinance and the findings of facts based on the ordinance. And Chad Wilson will talk about the, about the specific parking. And I'm here to, to say we're really excited about, about the project, and that Designer Review did come to the right conclusion and made the right decision. Please uphold their decision. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Joanne Butler, nine six seven East Park Center Boulevard, representing the applicant. As Mike said, we have appreciated the comments from the neighbors. Ever since the original application in two thousand nineteen, these comments have assisted the city, guided the project, and just one example, the neighbors in two thousand nineteen were very concerned that the applicant was providing too much parking. And Mr. Wilson will review this a bit further, but the comments of the neighbors in two thousand nineteen prompted a parking study to be done and a formal determination regarding the level of parking that's appropriate for this project. It led to a condition of approval that required a shared parking agreement prior to building permit approval. So when the Designer Review Committee heard this amendment to the original project, it weighed the substantial design facts presented, all of which supported the committee's conclusions of law that the application meets the required city code findings and should be granted. We explained further in our letter to the city that there was no error by the committee, and with no error, the decision of the committee should stand. An item raised by the appellant claiming that the application does not meet the intended character of the neighborhood is guided by the comprehensive plan is just misplaced. The intended character of the neighborhood is that of an activity node and transit-oriented development that encourages increased density. The intended character is also reflected in the zoning ordinance, including height, which the city has already legislatively adopted as being in accord with the comprehensive plan. The legislative intent of the city is not to set a height limit on this zone, and that is what a majority of the Designer Review Committee found when it approved the design of the application. To set a limit, to set a height limit, the committee said, would be arbitrary. Of course, we all know that if the community wants to set a limit to height in this area or anywhere in the city, the proper way to do that is to limit the height across the board for all developments by making a change to the zoning ordinance and not to single out a particular development in connection with a Designer Review hearing. So the Designer Review Committee did work diligently to review this application with the applicant, the staff, and the neighbors. There was no error by the committee, and none has been shown by the appellant. So we are asking the council to please respect the committee's decision. Unless there are questions of the council, I'll turn the podium over to Mr. Wilson.
Questions, council? Thank you.
Chad Wilson, Erstad Architects, three ten North Fifth Street, Boise. Mayor and council members, to get specifically at the parking issue. The code that's been referenced in the appellant's letter, eight dash forty dash five A is a table specifically for residential only uses. It was clarified by the city to us on a number of occasions that our project falls under eight dash forty dash five B, which is for mixed-use projects, which states that the minimum and maximum number of required off-street vehicle parking for non-residential uses and mixed use shall be determined by the planning official. So we further asked about that, okay? Planning officials, what do you want us to provide? And what we were informed was that we should put together a a study, a parking study, and propose a parking plan as part of our application. We did that, and ultimately through the hearing process and the original application, our proposed ratios were approved. The reason for the, the mixed-use section of code, of course, is to give some consideration to the fact that parking spaces, which during the day are used by retail tenants at night, become available for guest parking of the residences. So that's why that section of code specifically says that mixed uses, the required, the number of parking spaces required shall be determined by the planning official, which again was deferred to us to propose a plan for parking. We did that. It was approved. And that is acknowledged in in Ms. Veal's staff report, which does go through some of the calculations of if the residential table were to reply to us. It summarizes that, but at the end of it, it says guest parking and retail parking is consistent with the ratios already approved in the original project. One guest parking space for every eight units and one retail parking space for every three hundred square feet. So we feel we are being completely consistent with the parking ratios that were proposed, reviewed, and ultimately approved. Have it answer any questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
I wanted to make one point of clarification as we focus on this. As Ms. Herbert said, it's mostly her focus on the parking standards. And I believe she's referencing us toward a residential component within the code. But we are a mixed use, and, and we are going to be in complement with our property next door, which is the boardwalk apartments that has about twenty-one thousand square feet of retail. And so in complement with that, in concert with that, is why we've planned the first floor being two thousand square feet of retail in the open plaza, and it will feed next door to the other retail spots that are on the river already. So we still see ourselves as a mixed use and not a residential, even though we have reduced some of our commercial space from the hotel side. Any questions?
Questions?
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a point of clarification from the city attorney or the planning official, if I could. We keep co-mingling this specific project with the other ancillary projects that are part of the totality of the development. But we're not talking about, this is my interpretation, we're not talking about those other projects or what the use is or anything else. We're only talking about the, this project where it's been changed from the previous application. Is that, would I be correct in that?
Council President Suzie, you would be correct in that. But Mr. American, before Ms. Carver Herbert comes back up for her rebuttal, I just have a legal question, and I'm just the attorney, but Designer Review made findings under eight dash six B dash three, and I don't know which one of those findings under eight dash six B dash three that Ms. Carver Herbert thinks they did in error. So I'm hoping maybe she could respond to that or rebuttal, because those are the findings. It's eight dash six B dash three. And there are seven specific findings that are in their decision document. And if you'll allow me, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's specifically on page eight, nine, and ten and eleven, so it's their decision. Those are the required findings under eight dash six B dash three. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Can you reference the, I apologize, can you reference the packet page number, if I may, Chance?
If, if it please the mayor and council, the packet's a little confusion, confusing. It's, it's a different hyperlink. So you go to Ms. Thornborough's memo, and then she hyperlinks the record documents. And so you go to those hyperlinks, and then it is the decision document from the Designer Review Committee that was signed on August sixteenth of twenty-one. So I wish I could
That's perfect.
It's hyperlinked in the
And which page numbers again?
On the decision document, Councilmember Jorgensen, it's page eight, nine, ten, and eleven.
Thank you.
Yes.
Not sure I'm pulling right, because this document only has five.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if you would like to see that on the, and we can do a share screen, it would just take me a minute to find that. Would that be helpful?
Sure.
Okay.
Another point of clarification, it actually is in the packet on page one forty-three, if that's easier to get to, where the decision document starts.
The, which I didn't understand.
I guess it is.
That's correct. And then specifically on page one fifty-two, or excuse me, one fifty-one, and one fifty. So it's item number twenty-six in the findings of fact, starting on page one fifty.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
It looks like Ms. Carver Herbert is ready. If it pleases.
Okay, you bet. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council, Mr. Williams. I believe that the standard that design, the findings of fact, the committee did not correctly interpret would be the very first standard that you would find on page one fifty. The proposed design is in, is in conformance with the purpose of the zoning district and all the dimensional regulations of that district. And again, I know that the, the this relates, again, this is why the parking comes into significant area of importance, because the parking standards for residential developments is clearly defined in the zoning standards. So to go ahead and try to go through, I tried to capture what I could of the applicant's response. First of all, I think it's important to talk about the, the traffic study. Traffic studies are not required for residential developments. And as council member Suzie, you pointed out, there's, I think, a great deal of complexity wrapped up into this project, because you could take into considerations its original project with two other buildings that were brought into consideration. Now we have only one out of those three buildings that has completely changed, changed dramatically. And what's happened is that particular, that one building was, to the best of my understanding, a hundred percent commercial. It was intended to be in a hotel. It was a nine-story hotel. And the parking study that was done was needed, because as Ms. Veal pointed out, and I mentioned this in my testimony, that Ms. Veal pointed out that there are no defined parking requirements for commercial uses. That's in line four thirty-nine of transcript number three. So in circumstances when there are no Garden City does not have parking standards for commercial developments. And in those cases where parking needs to be determined, one aspect of that that can be provided for the planning official to make a determination of whether parking is appropriate for that particular use, the applicant can provide a parking study. In turn, that appears to be what this applicant then indeed do. Again, the point that I'm trying to put across is this is not the same development. It's essentially an entirely different use from what was originally proposed in the original application. It is now a residential development, almost I I believe 293,000 square feet. And less than 1% of that is now commercial. I could conceive that you might be able to use the commercial standard provided in their parking study for that 2,000 square feet of commercial, which I believe is seven parking spaces. But the rest of that development, 293,000 square feet, is a residential development. There is no way that you could think of it as being anything different. They mentioned the 45% less trafficked. But I would have to say that 40%, 45% less traffic does not necessarily equate to fewer needed parking spaces. Again, Garden City residential code is very clear. Now, Ms. Butler points out that the neighbors had some concern that perhaps that it was too much parking. And I believe and I'm going a little bit from memory, but I believe that in earlier testimony, the part of the concern that the neighbors had about this was because again, the complication of this project, part of this project was on R3 zone pro on R3 zone property. And part of it was on C2 property. Again, the confusion. The applicant was looking to be able to provide a portion of its parking on the R3 zone property. And so therefore the neighbors were very concerned about this. And it happened to be that that R3 zone property was adjacent to the neighbors. So that's what the concern that they were trying to draw from the fact that they were concerned there may be too much parking because a large portion of the burden was going to be falling upon the neighbors who lived on 40th Street and which parking was having to come into 40th Street in order to access parking. It was mentioned that they were guided by staff to use mixed use. And that's why this, that's why the parking study and that this project was solely, again, this project was solely a commercial building prior to its new use. The one thing that I want to be able to to mention is there was a great deal of confusion once again. So I can point out on page eight of the staff report. It talks about the, the, under, under the comprehensive plan, this development falls under three different land use designations. There's mixed use residential, there's neighborhood destination and transit oriented development node. And there's the Green Boulevard corridor. And as stated in the, in the report, it says the development is located within the C2 zoning district with which does not have a height or density maximum. Therefore, the 18 stories are proposed are in quote compliant. Additionally, the development or the development meets the vision of the comprehensive plan, neighborhood destination center and transit oriented development node by providing a high density, multi-story residential structure and mixed use. However, the development appears to have conflicting designations. There is a conflict between the neighborhood destination node and the mixed use residential designations in that the latter asks for lower density residential with the maximum height of two stories. So again, there's great deal confusion that's created with this particular project. And all I can say is it is no longer 100% commercial project. It is a residential project with a very small number, a very small percentage of commercial development. And therefore, it's my position that the residential parking standard should be applied.
Any questions? Hey, thank you. Sorry. Hey, Council, that concludes the presentations by the parties.
Mr. Mayor, point of order before you go into deliberations, if I may.
Certainly.
And I'm not trying to put words in anybody's mouth. So if I am misinterpreting this, I would like to stand corrected, but it sounds like we're only having, the council only needs to look at the first standard. It looks like she's only contesting the first standard. And so the other standards, I mean, she's not appealing the other standards. It looks like she's just appealing the first standard. And regarding parking standards and design standards, but if she's only appealing the first standard, then there's no reason to go into the other standards. Would be my thought. If I got that wrong, Ms. Carver Herbert.
Well, yeah, we need to, I need to make sure what we're deliberating on, so. Let the record reflect that Ms. Carver Herbert is answering, preparing to answer the question posed by council as a clarification on which standard or standards she is applying in her appeal. Hey, Ms. Carver Herbert, the, the, you can answer the question, but we're not getting into anything.
No, that's fine. Okay. I just, in clarification, I do believe I think with the point that the parking could create an impact on by not having a parking, I think that it could actually arguably violate the proposed design that the proposed design adheres to the standards for the protection of health, safety, and general welfare. I think that's all that I can bring to the table at this point.
Okay, thank you. Hey, Council. Items, standards one and two have been identified for the record.
Can you clarify what you mean by that?
Okay, so.
Because we have, we have written testimony and testimony from those who are here, and it doesn't exactly, and we have the decision from the design review. And so I'm trying to understand what the where we're going.
Well, the initial admonition is you're going to take the totality of what's been written and what's been presented here tonight. And your standard is written standard is that, just a minute. The standard of review is that you give due regard to the design review committee's decision. So if what you've heard or read would indicate that they made a material error in their decision, then you need to identify that. And you can change their decision. So with that, the matter is now properly before the city council for deliberation. So since two standards have been identified, I'll start with the first one. The proposed design is in conformance with the purpose of the zoning district and all dimensional regulations of that district. The design review committee found that the application meets this finding, the application is located off Veterans Memorial Parkway in the C2 general commercial and mixed use residential future land use designation, the application is compliant with all provisions set forth in Garden City Code eight dash two C and is in alignment with the comprehensive plans future land use designation. So that, that was the decision of the designer view committee. So if you want to start on that deliberation, did that designer view committee error in that finding?
Ms. Mayor, I'll take that one first. I believe the design review committee did error in that decision and in that finding. And I want to elaborate a little bit on that. What what we have is I'm for, for lack of a better classification, or we have development A, development B, and which are the other two, and we're going to call this one development C, which we're talking about tonight. And what's happened is regardless of what the reasons are, we're getting this, you know, the COVID reason or whatever. I, it just seems odd to me that you would make a decision of this financial magnitude on something that I I think is temporary. I, it just strikes me as a little bit odd, the reasoning on that. And, and so I guess the cynic in me comes back to was you know, all through the process before going all the way back to 2019, it feels to me a little bit like there was one project that was proposed, proposed and eventually approved. And then there's something being changed now later and, and it's not the same project. Not at all. When you're looking at the total square footage of the project, considering all three pieces combined, you've taken the biggest piece of the project or probably certainly in excess of 40% of the square footage, well, maybe more than 50 or more. I don't have it in front of me with what all the square footages are and change the use from commercial to residential. And so to me, we're, we're not even talking about the same project anymore. And, and now we're lumping together the other two to justify the third, what's happening, but we're not talking about the other two. We're only talking about this one. And when you take this one and you change it from a largely commercial use to an almost entirely residential use, and you're not making changes at the margins, you're not increasing it from nine stories to 10, or you're not increasing the total footprint of the building when, when you're essentially doubling the size of that component and completely changing the use. We're not talking about the same project at all. I, I mean, it's, it's not the same thing to me. So what, whatever the application was for the original, this component of it, let's just call it part C. And so I'm looking at this now and saying is the, is the proposed design in conformance with the purpose of zoning district in initial, it's, it's not the same project. And so for that reason, I, I believe that the you know, the finding of the DRC was incorrect.
Hey, for the deliberation.
Mr. Mayor. At, at my core, I, I really agree with Council President Suzie insofar as the project before us is not the it really in no way the same project. And I heard today in, in testimony, a reliance on a kind of a cross parking agreement for you know, a, a project that hasn't, has yet to be built. And I, I may also be cynical. But we really don't have reliance on those other two projects when we know that the first one's been changed. This it, you know, and I'm not saying it's a disingenuous change, but it's, it's not a hotel with rooftop bars and restaurants and commercial shopping. It's a, it's high density housing is what it is. And, and it relies to me. Okay, well, and let me back up just a bit. You know, this standard, we cannot ignore the zoning C2. I mean, that's, there's not dimensional standards. That's, that's clear in our code. I, I think the, the bigger question is, is this still, is this still as proper for, for a C2 zone? That's, that's the overarching question. I, I would say that the land use handbook now that was published by Givens personally references the propriety of opponents to a project to reference the comprehensive plan. And for that, Ms. Carver Herbert should be commended because the, the comprehensive plan that she references quite well in, in her materials. And I, I read every word twice in this memo. There is, there's a tension, however, with this approach of using the comprehensive plan insofar that the Supreme Court on a number of occasions has has held that intention of a comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance, the zoning ordinance will control. And we have a C2 zoning ordinance here. You know, I guess forecasting what we might see under Lupa. If this, if this were to go that way, it, it's, it's clear that the zoning ordinance would control over the comprehensive plan when those two were found to be in conflict. There's no fewer than eight cases that reference that in the case law that I read. I think the question here, and I realize that we need to narrowly focus this to standards one and two. I, I just go back to, I, I don't I don't see this being C2 commercial. It's, I don't see it really being mixed use. Maybe a very small percentage of it. An eyedropper of, of fluid in, in a river of water, I guess, makes it, makes it somewhat mixed. But this is not in the spirit of mixed use in my opinion.
Mr. Mayor and fellow council members. I, I agree. And I am going to also elaborate somewhat. I agree with President of the Council Sousa on the, there needs to be a separation, this specific development needs to be considered on its own merits. I also agree with Councilmember Page that you, this does not pass the sniff test for mixed use. And I want to applaud Ms. Herbert, Wendy Carver Herbert for her diligence and very specific. I, as she called out some of the concerns, I think it, it resonates with the community, and I appreciate that you acknowledge that. And I'll, I'm going to go a little bit further and state that where there was a tremendous amount of enthusiasm for the broad mixed use in a hotel and the, the virancy as described. There's a disappointment to see it be turned into high density housing. I am very, very sympathetic to COVID and the conditions that it is creating in, in all industries and in the economy. I recognize the fact that financing can be a real challenge, I think Ms. Carver Herbert also posed a good question. Can this be slowed down, does it need a decision right now echoing Councilmember Sousa's? I don't, you know, if there, it's not my money, of course. But my preference would be to take a wait and see approach, allow this to settle if at all possible and to retain it as a very high mixed use hotel, something that's vibrant, that brings excitement to the city. But bottom line, I, I concur with both Councilmember Susan, Councilmember Page that this needs to be reversed.
Okay, any other, any other comments on item one? Okay. So we're required to make a decision that you vote on in a roll call vote. So what I'm hearing is that the council believes that the design review committee aired and so far as item, the first item on page fifty, so that needs to get articulated with some specificity into a motion by some. Mr. Mayor, would
so, I want this in a motion that, that the, the findings of the design review committee were in error specifically that the design is in conformance with the purpose of the zoning district and the dimension regulations of that district. Second.
So would you repeat the motion for me?
At point of work, could I respectfully request of Council President that he say why or because why?
For staff to write it up. That the, the, basically the 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 nature of the project has changed from a commercial mixed use project to a residential project, so that it goes all the way back to the original application for me. To me, this, this isn't a change to an existing application, this belongs as a completely new application, and so the, this design is not in conformance with the purpose of the zoning district and is not in conformance with what was originally applied for. I'll renew my second.
Okay, thank you, got a motion and second, any discussion? Court color roll.
Councilmember Sousa?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes. Then the other one, I believe that the which Ms. Herbert was this, this proposed design adheres to standards for the protection of health, safety in general, where welfare of the city. I also believe that the project is not for the design review committee aired in that decision as well. Mostly going back to the eight four B one C that was referenced when I, when, when you change the nature of a neighborhood like this, I somebody's got to go first, I think the applicant mentioned that, that a change of this magnitude always is somewhat shocking. But this isn't the only change that we, we've had, and it's certainly not the only change that this council and the city has already proved, approved and for pending other projects from thirty fourth street. Among others, this, this project is just to me, in my view, just so completely out of scale with everything else around it. All the way from what's happened on forty third street, forty second street. It's, it's not in any way, shape or form like the existing neighborhood. And to me, the idea that you would have other like development come somewhere close to it, or you have another project that would be complimentary to it is I don't see that at all. Because so much of what else is around there has already developed. So anyway, for that reason, I also believe the design review committee was in there.
Further discussion on number two?
Mr. Mayor, I just feel like with number two, we need to focus turn a bit to the general welfare. The safety and I guess protection of health. And here we, you know, I don't want to imagine facts, but people out and about moving, you know, from home to, to their cars. There's, you know, and especially at night or in inclement weather. You know, the, the closer that distance of the vehicle to, to where they're parking and transporting groceries back and forth. Potentials for slips dealing with night potential safety issues. I, I, I think we need to tie a nexus in, in this finding as, as to how this would be different. Were it a, as originally proposed, where it was bound to be compliant. So I would open that up to my colleagues for a way to craft that, because I do think it's important to touch on the safety and, and health if we're going to bring condition number two into the into this as our opponent has requested. It's tough to do without imagining backs. Well, it is, you know, eight, eight four one B C, one C says that the design of structures and site development is compatible with the intended character of the neighborhood is set forth in the comprehensive plan. It's not just said to set forth in the comprehensive plan, it's set forth with all the neighborhoods that are around it. And something three times the size of everything else is, is not compatible with that neighborhood. So I, I don't think I'm imagining, I mean, I, I think that's fact, and it's but I'm in particular at number yes.
The health, safety and general welfare.
The general welfare of those other neighborhoods is, is impacted by there we go. Something of that magnitude and scale with, with, what has been approved and what is present already, so.
And Mr. Mayor, just point of order, thanks for letting me talk so much, I don't usually prefer to do this during deliberation, but I think it's important to remember that this is a P U D. And they were asking for parking waivers. So parking waivers were granted, and it sounds like the council is not complying with parking waivers being granted for health and safety reasons.
Well, wait, we're in the deliberation, the hotel was approved as a P U D. They current project that's subject to this appeal is a permitted use in a zone. So to drill down on the proposed design, adheres to standards for the protection of health, safety and general welfare. This, the, if I understood Council President Sousa correctly, he stated that general welfare would mean it's not in the best interest, interest because of the scale or the size of project in relation to everything else around it, in my
correct.
Okay. Okay. Further discussion?
No, sir.
Hey, what's the pleasure, counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that to find the design review committee decision in error. Because it does adversely affect the general welfare of the community.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? You're now, court color roll.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Sousa?
Yes.
Okay, counsel, now you've made a decision on these two criteria, now you need to make a decision on the the appeal itself.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to vacate the decision of the design review committee.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to vacate, I presume on the basis of the decision you made on items one and two, correct? Further discussion on the motion? You're now in for color roll.
Councilmember Page?
I, 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 I'm sorry, I'm
I'm sorry.
I, I would prefer to see a remand to remand this back to the design review for further findings on these two issues. And I realize there's a motion in a second, so I just want to state that.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to vacate. The discussion was a preference by Councilmember Page to remand as opposed to vacate. So unless I hear withdrawal of the motion, well, vote on the original motion. Okay, hearing no withdrawal, court color roll.
Councilmember Page?
No.
Councilmember Sousa?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Hey, the decision has been vacant. Now, counsel, do you need a short break, or you want charge ahead? Okay, we'll call a recess at seven thirty three and reconvene in about ten minutes. Thank you, we will reconvene the meeting at seven forty and move now to item G three. This is resolution eleven oh six dash twenty one. Authorizing the mayor to sign all applications, grant agreements and other documents related to drinking water planning grants. This is specific to a planning grant we got from the Department of Environmental Quality, is that correct, Col?
That is correct, Mayor, yes.
So it's not open ended for everything that might ever come in front of me, this is, this is specific to this particular grant.
Yes, Mayor, councilmembers, the grant that we applied for and received, it, it basically all it covers is a water planning grant, it's to build a water plant for Garden City, which we don't currently have an updated plan. And if we're going to do any major changes to our system, Department of Environmental Quality is going to request that we have that on hand, so they, we applied for the grant, we received the grant after the state received more money to extend the grants to cities who didn't initially receive it. We fell into that category, they've also increased the amount of participation on their end from forty five thousand dollar maximum to half of the project maximum, regardless of the project price. Our project, we initially thought was going to be about a hundred thousand dollars, turns out we've got the engineer estimate, it's closer to a hundred and forty two thousand, of which the IDQ will pay half of it, so they'll pay seventy one thousand dollars of it. So it, if we're going to do it, now is the time to do it, we're, we're, we're going to pay for half of the project, so. So. So I, I, I do want to just step in, I, I know that Councilmember Jorgensen had some questions earlier about the IDQ, and I think now is the perfect time to maybe answer that question for you. So what, what can I answer for you?
So what was the DEQ's input, what, why are they involved in, and what's the process of engaging them?
We engaged them initially with the grant application, they're, they're the overseers of this money from the state. They're the ones who decide based on a point system who is eligible for the grant and who is not quite as eligible, I think everybody's probably eligible, but some are in more need of money than others. And that's why we got involved with them. Once the grant was approved, then we had an initial meeting with them, kind of going over the project itself, the scope of work that's going to be required from the engineer, from the city. And based on all that, here's where we are tonight.
Got it, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Further questions? Mr. Schmidt? Hey, hearing none, what's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve resolution one one zero six dash two one.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve resolution one one zero six dash twenty one, is there further discussion? You're now the court color roll, please.
Councilmember Sousa?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Thank you, item G four, resolution one one zero eight dash two one approving the renewal of a lease agreement for office space at the Ada County Courthouse.
Mr. Mayor, can I talk on that just briefly?
Yes.
So as the council will probably recall, you previously had approved a resolution for the courthouse office. And that's what we call the satellite office or the annex office, that's, that's very helpful for when I'm trying cases or working cases over the courthouse, and so I've always, my preference is to keep it. But Commissioner Ryan Davidson wanted to change it, and he wanted to change our termination clause. For years and years, it's been either side can terminate with ninety day notice. Commissioner Davidson wanted to change it to thirty day notice, and so the only change that was previously approved by this body was changing the termination clause from ninety days notice to thirty days notice. And so again, that was my understanding is that that was Commissioner Davidson that wanted that change.
Ms. Mr. Robbins, do you have any concerns with that? That's a pretty short notice.
It is, but I don't think we have anything to negotiate, I mean, my understanding is the other two commissioners went along with it in the public meeting, you know, open meeting and and my, you know, and I've talked to Jim Bennett about it, I've talked to Steve Rutherford about it, I've talked to some others about it, but this is something that the commissioners are interested in pursuing. It is perhaps noteworthy that they did not make the same change for the Boise contract, I've talked to Jim Sullivan or the Boise City Attorney, they're not making a change for Boise. I guess that could be justified because Boise probably uses their office more because they're prosecuting on a daily basis where I'm just prosecuting two or three times a week, but they're asking for that change in the Garden City contract, but not the Boise contract.
So follow up question? So if you were given thirty days notice, do you have a backup plan?
I always have a backup. I have a backup, so you have for the backup. But yes, I mean, I've, I've talked to Jim Bennett, Jim Bennett could help me out, or there's some other options that so wouldn't be devastating to our operation, but it would be it would be an inconvenience for sure.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not expecting a notice anytime soon, so.
I'm not either, for things, so.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, what's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve resolution eleven oh eight twenty one. A resolution approving the renewable lease agreement for office space at the Ada County Courthouse. Second.
Got a motion and a second, is there further discussion? Hearing now the court call roll.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Sousa?
Yes.
Thank you, that concludes the regular business on our agenda, we do need to go into executive session to get our usual updates on Ada County Highway District. on Ada County Highway District and any other pending legal items that Mr. Waddams has for us, so I would entertain a motion to move into executive session.
Smear, I would move that we move into executive session in accordance with Idaho Code seventy-four dash two zero six one F to communicate with legal counsel for the public agency to discuss the legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated, but imminently likely to be litigated, after which the city council meeting will return. Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion, hearing now the court call roll.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Susan?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Thank you, thanks to you that have joined us virtually, that concludes our public portion of the meeting tonight. Again, thank you and good night.